Eji Mofa, pretty baby
Ah ha, I'm married child
Come and see Eji Mofa
I beg you be aware of her
Eji Mofa with her problem
Ah ha, I'm married child
Eji Mofa na flented to her bush
I beg you be aware of her
Na who go come Eji Mofa
Ah ha, I'm married child
Na who go show her love
I beg you be aware of her
Neku na fear God smona Fear God, fear God No sex Start take it easy, oh Jiri a wayo
Tumbon, tumbon
Hey! Papa Talk to Eji Mofa Neku ya neku enka Old age is coming oh She cannot be in this house and remain as attack Ati beg 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 See her, see man opus Hey! Efeke? Again What did you just say? Man opus Hey! Efeke is not man opus It is called men opus Yusef, you always behave as if you know everything It is man opus, one man The plural is men You think I don't know that one? Man is man opus Efeke you are lying It is men opus, two men inside pus It's only two men will not marry one woman No, it's two men inside pus She has to make choice of different men You always claim like you know it You don't know it and you be claiming right Ameg, it's man opus if you don't know It's men opus
We can summarize it Woman opus Solve your problem Woman opus
Nah, it's men that has a It's men opus Now two men go enter one woman Oprah one man It is one man pus It is men opus, Efeke I know this one Men opus
It's not a small pus A pus big enough to contain man and woman
Eh, different men
Pus
Tata o zuk Joe
Sorry, where is the Joe? Your father Where is Yusef, your father?
Hi!
Joe
You be blinding me of progress Blinding me of progress You just took the right time to come and wake somebody up from heaven Oguno
So Yusef, we just talked about Is he back from heaven or from where?
Before I woke up, I was with him in heaven
Has he come back now? You were together there Is he here now with us?
Back wayo I don't know
See Let's first say one truth If men in the city Have abandoned you Why not go for this in this village?
Yes
Yes, a way out
Eji Mofa Marry a late man Fear God forbid Papa One how This her insult is becoming too much She should not insult us again Nuka somo again Men kegikita na Nuka somo again Men kegikita
Crazy I know
Did I call your name? Did I call your name? Oh, Chero Oh, Guama So you know you married a late man Oh, you know Also, in your mind You think marrying a village local town That cannot wash his throats Is his husband Abon dije pota Abon dije pota Chinekwa wobakwa Say anything here now I will take Da Eji Mofa Try anything, I'm not gonna blow I will I will
I should be allowed to be in control
I will She should not be insulting us Papa This is rubbish This is rubbish Arat rubbish This is what it is Chero So Oh Guama, one ban she Oguroha ato, my younger sister Oh, you see you can fight me, opia? You want to fight me? You think you're now made because you have Husband and children, opia? Papa Aku me teko bethi You're saying teko opia? Ya sinis because you're better than protosie Wobugo, etalo kek, one manya Uso ma diho I am living I am living this To de, to de To de, to de Do you know my Stop going now People is begging you to stay Go! Go! Mama is begging you to suspend Go! Stop talking Trouble maker I'm going there no no Opia, men Two people want to fight here Hey!
Easy That's not the right choice It's a thing that should be handled in peace Do you know one problem I have with you? That you always behave like a man From where there should be peace You're making it to happen a crisis Is this name, Eji Mofa Attracting you?
Papa please My name is not affecting me anything, please I am a woman A full woman It is not my fault that I am strong And I don't take nonsense Papa please, they push you, leave it like that for me Because I like myself like that
Since you are insisting on Yusef Can you tell him to Bring snap for me Mayan dioke niya, oh Amane vani, uwa boze Listen, the man you're talking about I should be able to be given a Oh, drink?
Papa I have your husband I have a son And you know It is so mabo mama, I will chamo no
It is true, it is that you prove it If you have it in your mind, in your mouth You want a proof Let him come Yusef
Papa who dash monkey banana? Who dash monkey banana? Onhebito Hey! Where the husband where? It's okay Who do you respect yourself and stop talking?
Are you laughing at me? Nobody can laugh at you At least you cannot see laughter in any mouth It's a serious case, one to start and end quickly It is your own position
I told you, don't give people a talk Don't give people a talk
That will not solve it Will not solve it
Oh Guama, respect yourself oh Eji Mofa is our elder sister You are not the fault to be married in this house oh We all are married, but we don't talk to her like that I don't know what your problem is I'm wanting you to enough But I will not give no respect
Ani bukele ma, ane moze Tumbon, tumbon We era po glee, bo yo gato Yeto bo glee si Ebe ine webu si 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 Kambe mri agi limi, agi uno Oh My house cannot be on fire because Somebody's husband is abroad Not thinking about her again You webu rochibini in the Tiye ba wa Don't break my heart
Yusef Yusef eh Yusef eh Yusef, how many times did I call you?
Aku uborata ke korom
Uborata where? Uborata Yusef, when are you coming back? What are you still doing in London? What are you still doing in London, Yusef? I'm asking you When you come back? When are you coming back to marry me, Biko? Do you know the insult I get from my father on a daily basis? Do you know how my siblings In fact, the whole family Do you know how they insult me every day because of you?
Ne ma fam no London na chegum jaa longwa Egi yejilwa Ke egi yejilum Okay, ne, sorry, 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 sorry Egegum geja loge Emere mistake, wa ra no Sorry Egegum jaa loge
Where are you now?
Aku anom na Chelsea Anom na Chelsea, ne is nipu Kambe mama motu mgechi, moti gumiye jibi alo ono Acham kee mama ne ekui jibu temunga akonu Eyo taran ne
Bia Yusef Speak English Speak English, Bia chineka ogoku Speak English before thunder will fire you You are mad What do you mean by that? You see not this, my brother Everybody goes and they are speaking good English That you are in, or you can never hear but block I've been speaking English to you And you be replying me In that your own language Respect yourself oh Balu omogo, respect yourself there oh Dua omogo That is what you have been using to trick me You ja oh Take your time oh
Okay I'm sorry I'm sorry I've heard you, I've heard you Yeah Alright, let me Yeah, let me talk to you later then
Oscar no again What did you Bia, Yusef
Achileke no way Oke him no managa What I can I monodroke mna, I can a London Aga just wa ra no way, I know well Apeka na asim Anygo wa ra omoga na boke jiafo
This boy is trying me oh This foolish boy is trying me oh The worst part is that I love him I love him foolishly I love him too much Yusef, respect yourself oh Just come back here and marry me, ah I used my life savings All the money I have to send you abroad So you more just Come back and marry me oh I'll be fast about it because my clock is ticking This boy wants to frustrate me This boy, this boy is driving me crazy And to add salt To add salt to injury That to use less and foolish nabo that I have We be playing love play with that her criminal boyfriend in my face Hana palasem Anyway I can remove unko I know how to deal with them Both of them I can kiss I know what to do Now you can pardon them They will have Papa's Strength now They will have to pass strength now.